Nancy, can you hear me? Barry, can you hear me?
Wayne?
Yes.
Wayne, I have a question. Can I call you on the cellphone offline before we start?
Sure. Test.
I thought maybe it was a quick answer. Even though we voted on it.
Thank you.
I'd like to know if you can tell me, because I, same thing. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Doctor.
So they got to dance for 24 hours.
Good evening, everyone.
I can't hear you. Can you see me? Yes, but when I click on it, it's saying it can't detect the camera. I don't know why the camera's right on my desktop. I'm not here. I can hear, see you and hear you.
It's fine.
Let's proceed.
Motion to open public session.
Second.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yeah.
Dr. Martinez?
Mrs. Orth?
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Verselli?
Here.
Mr. Cathcart? President Fernandez?
Here.
Also present is Dr. Barry Haynes, Superintendent, Acting Superintendent of Schools. Mrs. Nancy Loyakono, Assistant Business Administrator. Mr. Wayne Demakoff, State Monitor. And Ms. Fabian, Board Attorney. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Ridgefield Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bergen Record, Municipal Building, Board of Education Offices, and District Website. Public participation will be conducted both in person and virtually through Zoom. All public will be muted throughout the meeting. Public participation comments are limited to five minutes. The public will be able to both speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually, telephonically, via Zoom. Individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the blue hand icon at the bottom of their Zoom window. Individuals participating by phone that wish to make comments during public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The Business Administrator Board Secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order their hand was raised. I need a motion to approve the minutes for December 15th, 2021, regular and executive session. January 5, 22, reorganization. And January 19, 2022, regular and executive session. Any comments or questions regarding the minutes? Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes, on January 5th and January 19th, I have to abstain on December 15th.
Your first abstention.
In order to technically, I probably should have to.
Thank you. Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart? President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Communications? Any communications from the subcommittees? Subcommittees? Yes. Okay, yeah. Not seeing any communications. We'll go to committee reports. Committee reports with a with Chair Burlinda about faculties and programs.
Sure, thank you. The Faculty and Programs Committee met on February 10th, 2022. All members were in attendance except, I'm sorry. Except for trustee Gibbons. We discussed the district curriculum and the posting of all curriculum on the agenda for tonight. We also discussed the new website that will soon be available on our district website. We discussed the clubs at the high school, the middle school electives, and the need for elementary clubs, clubs at the elementary level such as robotics, coding, etc. We discussed the possibility of a limit of, like I said, clubs at the elementary level. And Dr. Haynes discussed a teaching channel, a resource for our, for the future.
Subcommittee?
Oh, and also, we also discussed the Subcommittee, Social Justice Subcommittee, Dr. Martinez.
With regards to the Social Justice Committee, a lot of things have been happening at the school level. We talked last time about the fact that we have not, the part that we have not been good at is keeping the public informed. Because of the pandemic and things that happened in November and December, we're kind of back on track now. We do have a meeting of many of the stakeholders for February 28th, where we'll have teachers, principals, administrators, parents, and a couple of other community individuals from the community who will join us so that we can plan ahead, including a social justice cafe that's long overdue, which we hope to get done, I would imagine, either March or April. Another idea that we had is, you know, the Juneteenth holiday was passed as a federal holiday. One of the ideas that was tossed around was, since our calendar is already done, is having the Juneteenth holiday infused into our curriculum for that day. Something that Dr. Haynes will be working on and that the board supports. And that is my report. So we're back on track and look out for invitations to these dates.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez and Dr. Martinez, with a Buildings and Grounds Report. Trustee Cathcart?
We met, Buildings and Grounds Committee met last night. We discussed completed projects and projects that need to be finished this year. We also discussed the fact that 95 challengers brought back, made changes to their plans, and more than likely, it's going to be approved by the Planning Board. So that conversation revolved around how we plan for the future. So if we get a large influx of students, the next board, or whoever that might be, has a protocol to follow. Also, the builder agreed to meet with myself, Dr. Hayes and George, to discuss the concerns we have.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Cathcart? I was asking permission.
Go ahead.
Ms. Caca, could you, could you update us on, it was said in passing one of the other committees, but I wanted to get a bit more detail about the delays in the home and science rooms, construction project?
We discussed that, and there's a budgetary issue there, and then Dr. Haynes is going to be discussing that with, who did you say, Dr. Haynes, who you're gonna?
Could you, could you update us on what the problem is, Dr. Haynes?
What did you say in regard?
He asked me for an update on the budget of those classrooms. So let me build the context a little bit. Jim Tevis, working with the architect, built a budget that would encompass refurbishment of the current culinary room for domestic purposes. And two science classrooms would each be refurbished from the floor through the ceiling and the walls and everything else. At this point, as we review those construction projects, we look at the science rooms and some of the new costs that are associated with it, including some abatement that will be needed in those rooms. The costs that we're looking at are over the cost that Jim and the architect originally forecast. So we're reviewing those and scrutinizing those for the best path forward for those classrooms at this point.
Is that all with your report?
My report.
Okay, can we pass it on to Chairman Gomes, please, for financing insurance? Finance committee met on the 8th. All members were present. Just following up with all right. So the Finance Committee met on the 8th. All members were present. And just kind of carrying forward the discussion that questioned Dr. Martinez, we discussed the two rooms and additional funds that we would need to get them completed. You're probably looking somewhere over $400,000 each. So we'll have to make some decisions if we're going to go forward with one or both of them or, you know, so those are just questions that we'll have to have once Dr. Haynes meets back with the architect and Carrie meets with the architect. Couple of things that came into play there were, you know, the original plan was to use residential type equipment. Now they're thinking of using commercial equipment, which costs a lot more. And there are a few things in there that are costing the cost of over, significantly over. So the decisions will have to be made. You know, once we get the numbers back from the architects, which way we can go. The budgets are also due on March 15th for Carrie. Auditors have not given a draft yet, but she's hoping that maybe in the March meeting that they can do a presentation, a media presentation. She also mentioned some of the issues with the posting over time, and she's working on some plans on how to get a better handle of that. Thank you, trustee Gomes. President, trustee Gibbons?
Yes, the Personnel Committee met. We discussed various positions that were coming to the district as well as certain resignations. And we plan to meet again next month as well.
Thank you. Committee report? Yeah.
I do want to come back briefly and talk to Dr. Martinez about the question you had as far as the refurbishment of the classrooms. I feel comfortable that the board understands that before any decisions are made, I like to share a lot of that data. I just need more data. I need more numbers from the architect. I need to better understand the funds that we have existing in the current, both maintenance, reserve accounts, and then present back to the board suggested solutions for moving forward before we go out to bid.
Thank you.
Yep. Sure. Um. So Nancy, I'm going to share my screen.
Yeah.
Good. We're going to start with Dr. Martinez's announcements as part of the superintendent report.
I'll start with something really gut-wrenching. We have all served with, with Mary O'Neill. She was a member of this Board of Education for three years. She served as honorably as anybody I can remember. Every vote she ever took for us and for our kids was an ethical and well-thought-out vote, even the tough ones that she made. She did it with honor. And it was a real pleasure to have her on the board. She recently left the board. And soon after that, or towards the end of that, her husband became very ill and has since passed away. The funeral services were a couple of days ago. Today was the funeral mass, which was about as incredible of an event that I've ever seen in that, in that St. Francis Church. It really looked like it was a dignitary. And I think it speaks to the quality of people that they were, that they are. Both of them are just incredible people, nice people in every sense of the word. She, at a certain point, very shyly and with a lot of resistance, granted me permission to start a GoFundMe page for her. The page can be found on my RPBOE Facebook page that I maintain. But you can also find me, find my email through the directory, which is rmartinez@rpschools, and I'll give you the information for the GoFundMe page. Much more than the GoFundMe page, this family is going to need our help. You know, one of the beautiful things about this town that I think many of you who grew up here can attest to even more than I can is that it really does take care of kids when they lose a parent. People look out for each other. It's one of the things that I love about this town, that when my kids have ever, you know, been jaywalking, by the time they got to the side of the sidewalk, 10 people called me up and told me what they were up to. And we're going to, we have to come back, come together to support this family. One of the kids is early in high school and one of them is about to graduate. And so I ask that we look out for them. I ask that we contribute in whatever way we can and that we kind of keep them in our prayers. I also have another, another notice to read with respect. So I'm head of the Policy Committee now. I took Mary's position. And so I have the privilege of reading our public comment policy. So I'll start. Good evening. We just wanted to remind everyone that we will continue to have two public comment periods. One on agenda and one off agenda items. There is a signup sheet at the podium. We will call your name in the order that you sign in. Each member of the public will have five minutes to speak during each comment period. Time cannot be transferred to other individuals. Public comment period will be on for one hour on agenda items and one hour for non-agenda items. We thank you for your continued support and cooperation. I think that policy has been working out recently. I think people feel like they have enough time to talk for the most time, for the most part. I hope it continues. The last notice that I'm going to read is a notice regarding the governor's new mandate on the masks. I want to, I think Nurse Erin is going to give us some good news. As we, our COVID numbers are very, very low. And it's cause for celebration in many ways, regardless of what your position was on masking or anything else. The numbers are low and that's, that's important. As you're aware, Governor Murphy recently announced that the universal state mask mandate for schools will expire on March 7th, 2022. At the same time, he indicated that there will be updated mask guidelines forthcoming from the New Jersey Department of Health, disseminated to schools in the near future. At this time, we anticipate that new changes and guidelines being communicated through our own local health department, HARP, and Mid-Bergen Health. At this time, we need answers to critical operational questions to help us plan in anticipation of lifting the mask mandate on March 7th. Questions such as what we're responsible for regarding social distancing, quarantining, contact tracing, should somebody come up positive? These answers provided by our health organizations will guide our planning near the end of February and early March in a way that should allow us to communicate specific plans prior to March 7th. We currently have on the books a date of, is it March 2nd or 3rd?
The Wednesday. It's
I think it's we currently have a March 2nd Board of Ed meeting that's already scheduled and expect to present our plans and receive public input at that time. We really do thank you for your patience and input. These decisions have been very complicated and not very easy to make. And oftentimes, we don't get that much guidance from the power brokers above us. But we are doing our best and we thank your input and patience.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. At this time, I'd ask Mrs. Manokana to go ahead and elevate Nurse Erin for the nurse's report. Welcome, Erin.
Good evening. How are you? Just wanted to start out and just with a little bit of update as far as the numbers go throughout Ridgefield Park and through our school district. It was reported that we had six reported COVID cases in Ridgefield Park last week and the week before, seven. So the numbers have really come down within the town, and we're seeing that in the schools too. As of the numbers have really come down within the town and we're seeing that in the schools too. As of today, we only have two positive students throughout the entire district. On the 13th of January, we had 109 positive cases. So we've really come a long way in the past five weeks. Some good news is we plan to move to the new guidelines for quarantine students and bring them back in after five full days of quarantining at home if they do test positive. There are some restrictions that will go along with that, and that means students must be masked at all times once they, once they return. So we're going to be working with administrators, making a plan so we can bring that into effect starting after our winter break. Students will have to have somewhere to have lunch because they need to take their masks off, but they can't be around others while eating lunch. We also will be talking about the new guidelines. Hopefully they'll be out next week so we can put plans in place for the mask mandate. At this time, we don't really have many answers to that. We're just waiting on our guidelines. There's a lot that goes into this. We need to know what happens with quarantining. We need to know what happens. If a child is exposed, that means quarantining will go back to individual classrooms because if kids are unmasked, then they're high exposure. So there's a lot that goes into this and we're just waiting for some better guidelines on it. I want to thank the nurses. We've had a rough, rough two months and the school nurses have really worked really hard. And they've done everything they possibly can to keep the students and the staff safe. I also encourage parents to reach out to your school nurses if you have any questions, any concerns. And please continue to monitor children for illness. Just because COVID numbers are low doesn't mean the COVID cases aren't still around and there still is a lot of other illnesses going around. So please, if your children aren't feeling good, keep them home, contact your school nurse for further guidance. Any questions?
I do have one. With respect to things like the Plexiglas, I haven't been in a classroom in a long time, but I saw many classrooms with plastic glass and those type of restrictions. Do we have, will we get guidance on those or are those going to be left up to us?
Plexiglas really hasn't been, there hasn't been too many guidelines as far as that goes. It is not something that is recommended anymore. I don't believe any of the classrooms have them really. Though they found out that it really was not in place of social distancing. So we haven't really used them.
I would, I would ask, I guess it's an ask as a, as a parent and also as a board member that we be careful not to, you know, as we lift the mask mandate that we don't instead demand that the kids are 20 feet apart, creating even a more restrictive environment. That we be, you know, kind of really mindful about the fact that our kids are two years into this. And at a certain point, you know, they are being hurt more by our restrictions, potentially hurt more by our restrictions than the actual virus. You know, one of the things that disturbed me a little bit about a presentation that Dr. Haynes gave a couple of weeks ago, not the presentation itself, but the fact that we had more kids missing school because of our restriction, because of our reaction than to, to the illness. And I know that, you know, your hands are tied, kind of preaching to the choir, I know. But we really do have to be mindful of how psychologically damaging these restrictions have been for our kids.
And you're right, absolutely. Those things are going to be out of our hands. We follow the guidelines that have come down from the Department of Health. So whatever they recommend, we go with. Of course, social distancing in our classrooms are going to be nearly impossible anyway because of the amount of kids that are in it. But as you did say that, you know, the children aren't getting that sick and I agree for the most part, but I do want you to understand, and this is for everybody, that yes, this is, most of the kids are seeing mild illness, but we have several students that are suffering long term from having COVID and not just medical emergencies that are occurring, but anxiety based too. So we're dealing with a lot in the high school especially, and I know the elementary schools are too. So again, the nurses' role are to keep these kids safe. And I just want everybody to understand that. We are here just to protect the kids and that really is the main purpose of the school nurses. Any other questions?
So as always, Nurse Erin, I think it's very appropriate to give you and the nurses the attention that you deserve and our thanks and praise for helping us in this situation. Thank you again. I call on the people in the room, a polite applause, I think is appropriate.
Thank you. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I'm going to share my screen for this, the remainder of the superintendent's report. I did, by the way, put on this slide. Nope, sorry. This slide, Dr. Martinez's school address. So it's rmartinez@rp schools.net. If you are, are inclined and we are very supportive of you contacting him as far as Mary O'Neill. Um, so I'm going to spend a little bit of time with the help and support of three wonderful administrators for the rest of the superintendent report and focus on something we weren't able to do. Actually, I didn't do this. So some of you are not members of the District Blast and this month, we started the first issue of the Ridgefield Park Education Monthly Newsletter. This is kind of a pet project of one of the Secretaries in Central Office, Meg Baldwin, who loves designing things and putting things out. So she took a lot of the information from the administrators and our Twitter accounts and our Instagram accounts and put together this February newsletter, which tells a lot of the good things that's going on in Ridgefield Park. That hopefully will be a monthly newsletter that comes up because as I always say, I think we can always do a better job of sharing all the great things that go on in Ridgefield Park. There's a lot of good stuff. So we haven't been able to focus on the three district goals recently because of the pandemic and some of the things that you've seen at every board meeting. And it's time that we go ahead and focus back on the three district goals and talk about them because that's what can move the district forward in a very positive way. Tonight, we're going to have a, a presentation and I'd say, please indulge us because I wanted this to be a good thorough presentation to set the stage for goal two, early childhood learning, brain development and readiness for success, but especially on universal pre-K. And towards that end, the majority of administrators in this district were not around when this district had the same need this district has today in finding capacity to open more classrooms and other areas in our district. We have crowded classrooms as it is. It will be hard, as Mr. Cathcart said earlier, if we have additional population of students to find locations for them. And at this point, if we wanted to open universal pre-K, we would not be able to within our district. Those same issues came up in 2014 and resulted in some of the issues that we're facing today. And I think it's very appropriate for us, again, as new administrators, to go back to the past, figure out what went wrong so that we're not repeating mistakes. So I'm going to spend maybe five minutes talking about the elephant in the room of what happened between 2014 and 2019. I did not get this information from going around and asking people. I went to the auditor's report from 2019 and I pulled out some facts. So I, as the superintendent, could get a better understanding of what's going on. And so that the new administrators who were engaging in this program, that you'll see in a couple of minutes of figuring out how to build a universal pre-K in our district, had a better understanding of what went wrong so we don't repeat those mistakes. And I'm going to read verbatim some of the facts on the screen. This is a summary of the state auditor's report from 2015 to 2019. The RP fiscal year 2016 ended in a total budgetary deficit of approximately $2,760,000. It was made up of a general fund deficit of $1,100,000 and an unassigned fund deficit of $1,500,000. So I'm just curious of the people in there, how many people have actually read this audit report? Show of hands? Right. So I don't think this is a bad thing, actually, for our general public. We have 55 people on the, on the Zoom. I don't think this is a bad thing for our community to know either, because I do think that there are a lot of rumors and misconceptions out there. So I'm going to continue with the facts. The deficits came about because of tuition deficits. There, there are four bullets there. Tuition deficits, miscellaneous revenues not meeting unreasonable projections, unrealized savings and employee benefits and student transportation services, and what I'm going to focus on for a couple of minutes. Inadequate funds to cover lease payments for school facilities. And again, back in 2014, this district endeavored to go out and lease additional school facilities, and I'll get into. At that time, in 2016, the New Jersey Department of Education provided a $2 million, $2.5 million loan as an advance of state aid to address the year-end deficit. The loan of $2.5 million to be repaid over 10 years. Due to these reasons, in May 2016, the Commissioner of Education appointed a state monitor to oversee the fiscal operations of the district. So focusing on the lease payments. On June 2014, the district entered into a 10-year lease commencing on July 1, 2014. And the cost of the 10-year lease was $6 million. The lease was for the rental of two church-owned facilities referred to as the old and new buildings formerly used as parochial elementary schools. Again, the reason I bring this up and why it's so relevant is we don't have a capacity in our district to engage in opening universal pre-K. And so as the administrators will be presenting in a few minutes, how other districts managed to do this by partnering with local organizations and leasing and renting space that is paid for by a loan provided by the state. None of that occurred back in 2014. Bullet two, there was no public notice back in 2014, 15, no public hearing prior to the adoption of lease agreement. The lease was approved by the NJ DOE a year later. And the lease was not presented to the DCA for approval, meaning that, that organization looks at plans and blueprints, makes sure everything meets code. As renovations were required to these two locations to bring them up to code, there were additional cost deficits for both furniture and renovation expenses. Subsequently, the lease was terminated and the church filed a complaint to recover money that it had advanced to the district. In sum, the district paid $2.7 million to the church during the four years of the contract. And the district also paid $1.2 million for the RP elementary school conversion to bring our students back into our district, to the existing schools to be renovated. So that was history in 2014 and 15. And I present that because it's really important for this community to be mindful of what happened in the past, to explain as, as you're about to hear these three administrators explain that what we intend to endeavor on is not like the past, that we will be transparent. And what you're hearing is the beginning of the presentations of building this program. So you, as the community, will be engaged in a partnership, in discussions, in surveys, in planning, anything that we do going forward. And it has to start with a PEA grant to get money from the state before we do anything. And that's what you're going to hear about by this group that's setting the groundwork and planting the seed, and we thank you for that. So I introduce to you, Mr. Jason Katta, the Principal of Roosevelt Elementary School, to get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. And thank you, Board of Education, community members, for hearing us out about this universal pre-K program. It's a very exciting opportunity that we want to definitely go over and be as thorough as possible with our transparency. First thing that I want to acknowledge, it was requested, the baby scarlet, alright, he's going to be on every slide, he or she, I should say. You know, rather than the scarlet that we see on the high school presentations and such, we wanted to keep something in a nest, nice and safe, ready to go, so that when they're ready to enter kindergarten, we can have the baby scarlet spread its wings. But with that said, there is the obvious that a lot of community members think about with universal pre-K, which is hopefully it'll be a free program for their children to go. Yes, absolutely. That's the goal. But I want to think and go over something much larger than just a free program. The idea is to benefit the child at age three, at age four, and into their school career after high school as well. That's the purpose of a universal pre-K program. It's going to be a high-quality program that's state-approved with a rigorous curriculum, just like the rest of our curricula, all the way from kindergarten through grade 12. It'll focus on being, you know, growing socially with cognitive abilities as well as academics. The pre-kindergarten years, that's when I need everyone to realize, it, it, when, when we have little ones at home, a lot of their learning occurs as they're, you know, one, two, three, four. Alright, that's when they're learning most of their words. That's when they're learning how to share. That's when our children are learning how to accept others and play with each other. It's a very important time for the children to just grow. Alright, that being said, one little fact that we found, children who do receive a high-quality universal pre-K program by grade four, they're reading at grade level. That's an important one for us to consider. Alright, next slide, please. I mentioned already that it better prepares the children for the primary years, K2. So with that said, I want to point out kindergarten teachers are busy teaching children how to hold a pencil, teaching children letter recognition, capital letters, lowercase letters. What are the sounds they make? If these children come into kindergarten already knowing these basic facts, alright, they're going to be able to fly much better from kindergarten up. And that's the, that's a real goal. If they have that ability, it's going to reduce remediation. We're going to be able to focus on achievement rather than trying to close the gaps with students who did not go to pre-K. This should also help reduce special education costs. We see medical costs, use of law enforcement, courts and arrests. I want to explain that a little bit. Alright, when you think about it, a child who understands the school process, that child is going to enjoy school more. So if we get a child that is in the middle school years, the high school years, because they have a better understanding and a grasp of school, maybe they'll look at school as not just an institution for learning, but actually a community where they can grow as a person and join extracurricular activities, sports, other programs instead of hanging out. So this is where we're coming from with that statement there or that bullet point. I mentioned the curriculum that will be approved by the state of New Jersey, which will include social, emotional learning at that level. So we're going to be building students who are more prepared to handle themselves and work with others in a better way. And of course, the other goal, we're going to be increasing math and literacy skills. And in turn, that's going to help increase lifetime earnings and health outcomes. Next slide, please. Thank you. Alright, this is going to also help close the opportunity gaps for different groups of people, you know, different families in this town, different demographics, minority groups, socioeconomic backgrounds. If this program is free, which is the goal, everyone's going to get to attend the program. It's not just the people who can afford it. Alright, everyone will be able to join. We will do what we need to to get the message out to all of the families in this community so that every child ages three and four can get into our programs, which will only strengthen the system. Yes?
I, I just want to interrupt. There are, thank, thank you so much for the presentation.
Of course.
I've been an advocate since, you know, for our universal pre-K. But there are many districts that do charge for universal pre-K. And it's too probably, it ranges from, it depends on the district and the grants and the funds between 200, 250, even up to 700, which is even less expensive than babysitting service and also daycares that do not have an approved curriculum taught by certified teachers.
You're absolutely correct. Jason, I just, you know me doing this, right? I think Berlinda just volunteered to help you with your next presentation. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I appreciate that.
If she likes, she could take it on all herself. That's fine.
Oh, no, 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 no. You're doing this together. It was awesome. Thank you.
No, but Ms. Rodriguez, you're absolutely correct. A, as a parent of kids that are no longer pre-K age, we paid quite a bit for our children to go. We see the advantages now that they're in upper grades in elementary level. But yeah, there are districts, plenty of them out there that charge, and our goal is to prevent that from happening. I mentioned already the social, emotional development, cognitive skills. You know, these children will be exposed to more words, more rich literature that's only going to help all of them be more prepared as they enter the upper grades. And one of my favorite bullet points in the whole presentation from my piece here, it enhances the school community with families. You know, we'll have families starting as early as their children's third year, which only makes the, the community, family, school relationship that much stronger, more prepared. They already know the players before their children even come into kindergarten. And I think that's just an amazing plus for everyone all the way around. So this committee, we, we did a lot of homework. We're nowhere near done and we know that. But we've also done some other things, great things. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the supervisor of special services, Ms. Stephanie Von Rudenberg, to go over some of those key takeaways. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. Mr. Katta did, oh, sorry, can you hear me better? Okay, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Katta. Mr. Katta did go over many of the benefits of having universal pre-K. But while there's many benefits, we have to be mindful that this is an ambitious goal. And there's some considerations that we have to really look at when we're planning this out. And there's some considerations that we have to really look at when we're planning this out. So first of all, we need our community support. And this is the first step of that, having this meeting tonight and playing the groundwork and also having further involvement for our community through surveys and different meetings and things like that. The goal is a multi-year endeavor. So in order to be successful, we have to realize that this is not a one-shot deal. This is something that will take time and can expand and grow once you get the groundwork laid and the program going. So it's a marathon rather than a sprint. And it's done properly, an increased number of pre-K H children will receive a free education with state-approved curriculum. And again, Mr. Katta spoke about this, but this is so important because this is really where that playing field is level for everybody. Because when you're going to daycare, you're home with mom and dad or grandma, there's all different, you know, aspects that children are being exposed to. And it's just so important to have that level playing field for all students coming into our district. District and community support. An important step is understanding the district will apply for the preschool education expanded, expansion aid grant, which Dr. Haynes spoke about through New Jersey. The awarded funds from the grant go toward all aspects of the program. This keeps nearly all funding, funding from the taxpayers of Ritual Park. So this is a grant. It's, it's something that's rolled out every year. Recently today, Governor Murphy actually announced that he's going to have his budget presentation March 8th. So you'll, you'll get to kind of know a little bit more of what he's allocating money towards. So we'll have a better idea of what he's going to allocate towards this grant for the state. So part of the process is, as their committee, we went to different districts, went to neighboring districts. So one of the districts we went to, oh, sorry, next slide. Sorry, Dr. Haynes. So one of the districts we visited was Bagota, we actually went on-site to Bagota. They just went through this process and they have a combination of partnership and building classrooms. So part of it is they have pre-K classes in their building. They utilize space that they had available. And then when they needed more space, they partnered with a local daycare in the community. So that's a combination that they used. And then another district that we met with was Hackensack, which is a much bigger district. They've had their pre-K program going for quite a while now. My three children actually all went through the pre-K program there, and it was very beneficial. And they have a partnership building leasing combination. So they lease with Darched ICs of Newark for their early childhood center. And then they also provide additional pre-K classrooms in their district elementary schools. Excuse me. And they also contracted with local daycares for additional pre-K classroom space. Hackensack's a little bit different, their numbers have been going down over the past few years. I think they went down about 500 students since 2018. So they had space to use in their buildings. And even after utilizing that space, they still had to contract with outside providers. So they're in a little bit of a unique situation, but they keep continuing to apply for the grant and expand their program. So I think the biggest lesson we learned is that to start small and grow from there. Once the program has started, it becomes easier to expand. The state has many stringent requirements, but it's important to note that they're not stringent on how you get the program going. So although they look at classroom space and the minimums that you need and the curriculum and things like that, which Ms. Hernandez will get into, the grant itself lets you be flexible in how you want to roll it out, whether you want to use it in your buildings or contract with a private provider. So that's important to remember. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hernandez to speak about a little bit of the nitty-gritty of the grant.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Next, thank you. So locations to consider, Dr. Haynes mentioned, as well as Mr. Katta and Ms. Van Rutenberg, that there is multiple ways that we can move forward inside our own facilities, using private companies, establishing partnerships with local facilities in town, and also leasing space if there is space available in our community. So those are three avenues that we can consider taking a look at. The first one is a little bit more challenging, as Dr. Haynes mentioned, because we are very overcrowded right now. But these are locations to consider. Next slide, please. Staffing. So when the grant is applied for, there are specific criteria. Teachers need to be certificated right now in preschools that are off-site locations. That's not necessarily the case. But for a pre-K teacher in universal pre-K, they do have to have a preschool certification. There is a need for an early childhood director or coordinator. It is, it is a prerequisite. It was stated by the Bergen, Bergen Executive County Superintendent that that is needed in order to run this program. A master teacher is also highly recommended. The master teacher will be providing support to teachers in the form of coaching, modeling lessons, planning, organizing the classroom, following the strict guidelines that pre-K needs to follow according to the state of New Jersey. Aids are also required based on the population, population of the classroom, and you cannot exceed more than 15 students. So when we look at the number of, of students that we might have in what they call our universe of possibility, possible three-year-olds and four-year-olds located in Ritual Park, you would have to think of, well, one class will take 15 students, how many classes would we need to continue to open to fill all the, the children in our community? So 15 students is the max that you would need with an aide there to support. Next slide, please. Going back to the early childhood coordinator, this person would require, be required to have a principal or supervisory cert that he or she would provide guidance with the master teacher and hiring pre-K staff. They would provide support and assess professional development. They'll ensure that a proper curriculum is adhered to and selected. And I'm going to speak a little bit about curriculum next. But there are four specific ones to choose from. They would also be navigating and applying for the grants each year and budgeting that money that's allocated. That is a big undertaking. Applying for that grant every single year is a packet extremely thick that goes in very specific detail of who you're partnering with, where are they located, what is the room size, what's the measurement? What's the furniture, what kind of furniture are you using? So it's, it's pretty detailed of what the expectation is by the state of New Jersey to create a pre-K.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
When you looked at the Bagota program and the Hackensack program, what percentage of those programs, I'm not looking for an exact percentage, but what percentage of those programs are covered by these grants? And what would have to come out of tax dollars or the other side of the school system?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe 100%. I believe 100%.
No, okay, thank you.
Pre-K students are, they are entitled to an education, so they would be excluded from this. So if students were part of that program, when they do the calculations, that comes from a different allocation of money. So the special ed students would not be included in that grant.
That's excellent, thank you.
Also, the early childhood coordinator would be critical in creating partnerships with local facilities, visiting those facilities, making sure those teachers are doing what they need to be doing, the facility is up to par, the teachers, the room, the furniture, all of those things. It's, it's a big undertaking and it's an important role that we would need to oversee the early childhood component.
And back to Dr. Martinez's question, the early childhood coordinator's salary is also paid out of the PEEA grant. It's written into the grant in these other districts.
The principal supervisor's salary is written.
It's written, at least in the, in the programs that, that we looked at. I looked at Morristown in addition to Hackensack and Bagota. In those three districts, it comes out of the PEA grant as they rate it. Yep.
So aides, teachers, coaches, coordinators, all come from the grant. Furniture for the classroom comes from the grant, curriculum, materials, toys. Yeah, thinking toys, utilities, technology, any improvements, but not capital, not capital improvements.
It's, it's, and so as the team presents, you guys are making it sound really, really good, and it is. There's a lot of work. I don't want to deceive anybody. It's a lot of work to go ahead because as each one of those consumables or receivables comes in, right? The, the agency has to submit to our business department, who has to then submit it to the grant for reimbursement.
Yes.
So it's, it's not like
Undertaking.
It's a huge under, I want to be clear to our community that it sounds great and the PEA grant does pay for it, but there's a lot of work here.
And, and repeated work every single year. It's not just a one-and-done, it's every single year this is waited for by the governor, and then we allocate money and we apply again. Next slide, please.
One second, Dr. Haynes, did I understand you that it's an outlay and then a reimbursement as opposed to a grant and a justification?
We were just discussing it right now. You get the money upfront. If you're, in a conversation we had with Bagota, they were able to keep some of it and they had to use it in other ways when they realized they had a little extra. So you get the money upfront and then if you are partnering with another service, it becomes an issue where they may receive a check quarterly based on all of their expenses and salary and stuff like that. And if it's within the district, we're not paying it out, it's staying within district, just pulling from that grant on that budget line.
Just really quickly, I was going to wait till you were finished, but could the master teacher and coordinator be shared? Could we have, it has to be primarily for pre-K.
So the, the master teacher really has no, sorry, the master teacher cannot have any teaching, administrator or supervisor responsibility. So it really is most like a job coach, that's, that's the role of this person. So the coordinator would be more of a supervisory role. So it cannot be the same person. We were looking at to see if there's classification because one district did say that they did not need the master teacher unless there was a minimum amount of classrooms. But then the grant language looked a little bit different. So you definitely have to get clarification whether you needed that master teacher for, you know, if you had one classroom versus 20 classrooms.
Thank you. And we can't use our coach and, you know, for pre-K and for the elementary, that has to be primarily for the pre-K. And we can't use another principal of ours to be the coordinator.
I mean, I guess we could explore, but you'd have to make sure you earmark that money that whatever the coaching is going towards is only for pre-K because a grant can't cover anything beyond pre-K. So you couldn't have somebody coaching kindergarten first, second grade.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The master teacher can have her own pre-K classroom?
Right, no, no teaching, they said no teaching role. So no teaching, no supervisory or no administrator role.
So, okay, let's just say if I'm a pre-K teacher, right? Can I be a pre-K teacher that year and be the master teacher?
I don't, the way the language in the grant states it, it doesn't seem like you can be. I don't know. When, when we read it, it looked like they couldn't have any teaching role.
Has to clearly be a master teacher. So the master teacher cannot be a classroom teacher.
Correct.
A pre-K classroom teacher.
That's, that's the language it says in the grant. Unless, like I said, unless there's a minimum. So, you know, Hackensack's a bigger district, so I know that they definitely have a master teacher. Smaller districts, I don't know if they need that master teacher, if there has to be a minimum amount of classrooms to have that master teacher to oversee.
District.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't want to get too, too into the weeds, but these partnership, like daycares from the community, that what they would be providing us is, like, would these teachers be staff of that organization or are they district staff?
They're not district staff.
They're not district staff?
No, they're not part of the pension or anything.
But they need to be credentialed to a certain level and supervised.
They have to be a sort of, they have to meet the state standards, credentials to be a pre-K teacher as you would in the high school. And the same goes for the curriculum, but they're an employee of that, of that facility.
Thank you. Okay.
Is there any feedback that the district gives to these organizations that we could make sure they're properly qualified, the teachers, the master teacher?
Oh, yeah, the half, that's like a whole.
The coordinator, coordinator is doing all that hiring.
Right.
So there is, we set the criteria based on the state of New Jersey's criteria. And then we're the one overseeing their facility. So their facility might have like a director, but we are the one in charge of that preschool classroom, saying which teacher is going to be teaching there. That would be the coordinator's position. And doing that interviewing, making sure the credentials are what they need to be, the curriculum is what it is, what it needs to be. And that professional development, coaching, all of that, it's just happening off-site at a different location.
Good, we see all that.
Yeah, we're the one overseeing that. So looking at curriculum, there are four state-approved curriculums to choose from. So again, thinking back to not a state-approved preschool, they might have their own thematic units where this is more, you need to choose from the four. So they have the creative curriculum, high school preschool curriculum, tools of the mind and connect for learning. So the state provides these four. And then as a district, the coordinator, along with the master teacher, will decide which curriculum is most appropriate for our learners and our community. But they must fall within the realm of those four particular curriculums. As you can see in the picture, that is a very true representation of what a preschool looks like. There is height requirements for furniture, there is types of furniture that you can use, there is types of toys that you can use. Building blocks are a necessity. Pictures have to be labeled everywhere so kids can know where to put materials back. There has to be a certain square footage of, of space for kids to be in. Even though there's only 15 little bodies, you need to think about 850, 950 square feet and 750 usable square feet. So there is like a certain dynamic and measurement that as, as we develop this program, when we're going off-site to, to build partnerships, to see if their facility can fit these requirements by the state of New Jersey. So that picture is a true representation of what you'd see like thematic play and the kitchen area as well as the literature, the height of the furniture and all the things that, that are required by the state. Dr. Haynes, you're going to wrap this up.
Dr. Haynes. I think, so real quick, I just pulled up the language for the master teacher. I just want to make sure. So it said, the role of the master teacher should dedicate most of their time to classroom visits, coaching and supporting teachers through the reflective cycle and follow-up discussions with teachers regarding children's learning and instructional practices. And then in bold, it says, master teacher should not have any teacher, supervisory or evaluators responsibility. So I read that as they can't be teaching in the classroom. Yeah, and then one master teacher per ratio of 30, 20 classrooms. So once you go over 20 classrooms, you would need to add another master teacher.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I don't know why my microphone's also working. Signing with goal number three, CTE. I know we have here in the high school, the tomorrow's teachers program. I hope it's still running. And those students generally would do an internship in a elementary school. Is there any way that they maybe could fit in as aides in this pre-K? Or is it because it's an outside organization, we can't use them?
I'm sorry, were you asking if high school students?
High school students can do an internship there.
Patty Congleton's room, right? It's, it's Patty Congleton's room, I believe.
No, I think
I guess some of the, the high school has those child development classes.
Child development classes.
Early childhood, right.
I know they do that in Northern Valley, Elton Pan, they have a program where the kids will go and then the teachers. I don't know because this is a state-approved funded program, if they would be, if they would qualify as a teacher assistant or not. I'm sure we could work it out if they want to go get hours there. But I think we would probably still need to have one teacher's assistant per classroom, a certified teacher assistant with a background check and everything that we do now. But I don't see any reason why they couldn't be involved for experience hours or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
The idea is this program also has to be a full-day program. So we wouldn't be able to allow a high school student to miss a full day of classes to be in there. But an internship or something like that, community service, I think that would be able to be worked out, but definitely not as an aide actually working within the program.
I believe it does.
And I just have a question about the master teacher. It's, there's no additional certification for a master teacher. It, it would be based on, I mean, I'm assuming they'd have to be a certified pre-K teacher, but other than that, is there an additional?
No, there's no additional credentials, but they would have to have three to five years' teaching experience, experience giving professional development to preschool teachers and have that P3 certification. So I think it's more qualifications than a certification besides a P3.
I just have a question. It does sound something very interesting. And you answered my one question, which is how long of a day is the program? So it's a full school day? Okay. And then in the, in the districts that you looked at that are running this program, what kind of participation are they getting from the eligible population? And what retention are we seeing? You know, if there are X number of students that are in the pre-K program, how many of them are still in district as they advance through the years and is the district seeing the benefit?
Hackensack, actually, they have, that's my home district. All three of my children went through the pre-K program there. They're still expanding. So every year, I think last year was the first year they had enough spots, but then they wound up having a waiting list as people enrolled later on. So they're always, they're always expanding and they always have more coming in. As regard, in regards to retention, there is, you know, and I think it depends on the community. There's some communities that are a little bit more transient than others. But we do have a lot of students that stay within the district. My family is, you know, a perfect example, but there are other districts that move. I don't have exact numbers after, you know, if they're moving after pre-K or kindergarten. But again, that is something when there's full day pre-K, that is a big, you know, draw for parents to be in that district. So that's important to have those numbers. But I don't think it's a lot of turnover. A lot of the students that might So that's important to have those numbers, but I don't think it's a lot of turnover. A lot of the students that my, my children were friends with in pre-K, they had in kindergarten and first grade as well. But I think it depends on the community as well.
Okay. And, and you just mentioned that the, they're expanding more slots. So what is the criteria for, for students to be able to be accepted into the program?
Um, some districts are lottery, some are waitlist. So I know Hackensack was a, a waitlist kind of program. You know, I was there, you know, three o'clock in the morning when my guys were enrolled to try to, to get online and get there. But they're at the point now where it's a little bit more laid back and they were able to kind of streamline the application process to online. Other districts do a lottery, so everybody kind of signs up and then they kind of randomly pick someone. So that's really up to us. I don't think they have guidelines on exactly how you want to do that because I know Hackensack and the Gota kind of do it differently. So that would be something within district that we would have to discuss how we want to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I go to a close?
Can I just mention that we get phone calls at the elementary schools daily of families that are looking to move to our community and ask, do we have pre-K? And that's something that our, our administrative assistants are constantly saying, like, unfortunately, we do not. So there are people who want to move to our community who are looking for this. I, they don't necessarily say they moved already, but there definitely is some interest. And we sent out a survey, I want to say back in December, and there was a strong, strong, strong voice in our community saying that they would be interested in, in a pre-K program. So I think that we would probably have like a waitlist, like other communities of people who are very interested in, in joining that.
Thank you. Don't leave yet. There are few times when I sit in this position as your acting superintendent and experience such joy and privilege as sitting here and watching what's going on in this room. My heart is pumping. I'm listening to awesome questions and answers and discussion. And to me, maybe it's because I'm an educator, but I read the room and I see people interested and engaged and asking good questions and participating. And I am so proud of this board as a governing body right now, united on goal number two at this stage. I am thrilled beyond belief and I thank everybody in the room for being so engaged and attentive as we start this journey together to create a universal pre-K. It will start slowly. As the grant gets written, we have already missed the September deadline. So I will, I want to be very transparent here. If we did anything, it would be in January and we would start small and it would be a proof of concept in January that we can do this and we can move forward and it's good for our community. So the next steps that we have, and I've been talking to Mr. Demakoff about this, we need to find a grant writer. And whether it's somebody we borrow and pay a stipend for from Hackensack or Bogota or Morristown, Mr. Demakoff is supportive in finding an outside consultant to help us on our way to start this grant process. We will assess internal space, which I don't think there will be much assessment there. I think we already know the outcome of that. We will reach out to possible private partnerships in the community and we will be reviewing and adhering to the PEA grant. And we all will be learning this along the way, looking at locations, facilities, required staffing and hiring, and looking at the instructional practical program. We look forward to updating the community of progress in the springtime. And I can't thank the three administrators enough and the committee that's been working on this to present this. Thank you. And that ends the superintendent report.
Moving on to the monitors report, I don't know how you can follow up with that, Mrs. Demakoff, but.
You can talk how we're working together.
Well, I wouldn't even try. So. Okay. The governor's budget address scheduled for February 28th has now been changed to March 8th, based on a vote by the state senate and house. This will have an impact on our district as well as all school districts in the state in the preparation of their annual budgets, since the time for submission of the preliminary budget to the county for their approval will be significantly reduced with the state aid figures being delayed by two weeks. We have not received the results of our June 30th, 2021 annual audit, but a draft report is expected within a week. Following receipt of that report, a meeting will be scheduled with our auditors and the finance committee to review the audit findings and the finances of the district. In regard to the payment of the legal fees related to the pending litigation with Dr. Bender, the board's attorney fees are now at $33,365.15, including the January billing. The state monitor's attorney remain at $598.50 and some at-risk insurance company's attorney fees remains at $5,000 for a total to date of $38,963.65. This total includes the board's attorney's estimate of $4,095 for the month of June and $1,971.61 billed by a third party for work on the Bender litigation requested by the board attorney. That concludes my report.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My apologies before for not including the policy committee report. Dr. Martinez, please.
Yes. It's actually a brief report, but thank you for the time. We reviewed some of the policies. Most of them were, I don't know if the proper word is boilerplate policies that are required by the state. The one I did call, called my attention was the high school graduation credit one, which we require 125 versus 120 that's required by the state. And those five extra credits being in world languages, which I thought was a, was a very good thing that we require those. Those extra credits. That's all I have.
No, I, I didn't get a chance to let him give a policy report, door committee reports. So I wanted to circle back to them. I guess at this time, I'd like to open the floor for citizens' comments on agenda items. Does anybody need a bathroom break by chance? Okay.
You can have your break. I'll wait. Leslie Godley, 464A Liberty Street, Little Ferry. Um, two questions. Um, there is an item on the agenda about paying legal fees for the former board member, Mr. Freeman, with regard to ethics violations. As a general question, are ethics violations something that can be looked up publicly, like legal charges or no? No, I mean, I can, how you can look up lawsuits? Can you look up ethics charges? Is that public or is that private? Okay. But while they're reviewed, they're not. Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Second question, I was looking at your proposed calendar for next year. And I was wondering why on some of your professional days you have the late opening? Because I think that's a problem for some parents.
Yeah, I'll answer that. And this was a hard decision as we looked at, and you, you've heard earlier this evening that our students are experiencing learning loss. They need learning acceleration. And our teachers need time to get together and articulate support systems and best things that are good for our students. So we traded in a full professional development day. I think it was usually done in March or April. And we divided that up so our teachers could get together more frequently and focus more on individual students and their needs.
Ms. Fabian, did you want to comment on the question related to our agenda item? Now, the question by Mr. Godley was related to an agenda item and the ethics related to it. And would that be a public?
Got it. Yeah.
Decisions are published on the SEC website.
Call about Ms. Jennifer Schmidt.
Jennifer Schmidt, 138 Fifth Street. General comment, I'm excited about universal pre-K. Hopefully you guys can get that off the ground before my daughter is, you know, over the age to, to utilize that. And then second, I just wanted to comment on the meeting minutes from January 19th. Just to clarify, it had said that I made mention to my daughter's accommodations not being met by Lincoln School due to a substitute teacher. And I just wanted to set the record straight that that matter was, you know, further investigated. And it turns out everything, her accommodations were met. So I just want to put that on the record. And also on the statement that I said nurses should not be allowed in school, in classrooms rather. I just wanted to clarify that as well for the record, that that was really a comment about contact tracing and how we contact trace and interrogating students without their parents' consent. So again, just to clarify for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Ms. Janet, please proceed.
Janet Malou, 163 East Grand. Luckily, some of the questions have already come up. I have a question regarding, I know this is going to be a state issue, but if a child, a student is out for five days due to COVID and allowed to come back in, but has to wear a mask, when no other child does need to wear a mask, doesn't that really question the HIPAA laws? Just food for thought. I mean, that it's obvious that child had, had or has COVID and they're coming back in and now, oh, I don't want my kid sitting next to that kid. You know what I'm saying? Like, I, I just questioned the state reg on that coming in. F I 182. Not quite sure how to understand this. Does this mean that if bids go out and they're unsatisfactory, that the district has the right to just choose any place of their choice and pay whatever? Like, is there a cap on how much spending can happen? In other words, if, you know, you go out to bid for something that most places have, let's say for $3,000, okay? But you're not pleased with the situation of it and you find someplace that has it that you like better for $10,000. You can spend the $10,000 or does that become a decision of the board?
Mr. Demakoff, so Nancy, do you want me to start answering that? I think Mr. Demakoff went in here too. It's the National Purchasing Cooperative, right? Isn't that a, that is one of the like ESCs or commissions that we purchase through? Mr. Demakoff, I'd, I'd ask you to weigh in here too, but it's a purchasing commission, which means to get that contract with us or to be an ECS, a consumer place that we have to deal with, they had to follow certain state guidelines and adhere to certain state contracts and certain dollar amounts, just so that we could do business with them.
Okay.
Things like, like the ESC, there, there's a 100 and county one, there's an ESC. Mr. Demakoff is familiar with, maybe if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, there's a number of them out there and you can become a, a member. And if you need a service that has been bid by them and it's within the price range that you think is a fair price, you don't have to go out and bid yourself. You can accept that. You could certainly go out and, and if you can get a lower price, you can go out and get a lower price. And, you know, you're not bound by anything because you're a member of, of that org, that group at all. So you have choices.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Many times the, the amount that you can get a item from one of these organizations is, is less than you would have if you went out because they, they have many places that have, have submitted and done the work for you in bidding process. So it, it's your choice. You don't have to take whatever they say.
All right. That explains it a bit better. There was another one, P 179. Is that a new position?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yes, that came up in session. That's the walk-in. Yes, that is a position that was budget, it's a needed position. It was budgeted for last year in the budget. And the, there was an interview process recently finished and somebody's proposed on the board agenda to hire in that position tonight. That is a new, that is a new needed position.
Okay. All right. And lastly, I'm not sure where this was in the agenda, but it's the one where if we have any questions, I guess, or comments, it was a public notice of intent to amend or alter the acting superintendent's contract. So this is only going to be if we write something in. In other words, we can't, whatever comments we have has to be in writing, if I'm understanding this. Members of the public are invited to submit public comments regarding a proposed amendment and/or alterations to the acting superintendent's contract. When you say submit public comments, I take that as something in writing. Ahead of time.
I believe it also could be in person. That's the way I interpreted it. And I believe it'll be a public hearing. So.
Okay.
Okay. But if you'd like, I'd let, if you want more further information, I can refer to our, our acting board attorney. More information if you'd like.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a handle on whether this, you know, was, whether you could, because it does say about no comment will be made. I understand that. But it says, shall not publicly discuss personnel matters, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, the way I interpreted this with that one comment above there was that it was not up for discussion in person. It would just be what you can write in. So, all right.
It does not mean you have to submit comments in writing. There will be a specific portion about that topic. And it will be just like the public portion happening now. Does not require submitting comments in writing.
Okay. I really couldn't understand what you're saying.
Ms. Fabian, if I heard, do you mind repeating yourself? You said there might be a, a, a portion of that meeting where it'll be public comment on that item, on that agenda item?
Yes, it will be a public portion comment period. It is not, there is no requirement that the comments be made in writing. It will be a normal public portion upon that topic specifically.
Doesn't have to be. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Janet. Nancy, is there anybody looking for questions? Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. It's Marley Gonzalez, 225 Euclid Avenue. Just a quick question about universal pre-K. I understand that there's a grant process, obviously, but I thought I heard that the grant needs to be applied for yearly. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what happens if the grant is a? So what happens if the grant is applied for, we get it, the process begins, and then for whatever reason, the second or third year, we don't get it. What do we do then?
That is a good question. That is something that we could put on future agenda items. That is something that you're in good company because Mr. Demakoff is fond of asking that same question. I know that if something like that were to happen, Bogota and Hackensack and Morristown, and I mean, there are hundreds of districts out there which require and count on that PEA grant coming through every year. So, but I will put that on one of the future presentations to answer.
Barry, if I can just comment, Dr. Haines, I'm sorry. I think with most government grants, having written a couple and gotten a couple, they don't just cut you off automatically because you didn't submit a paper or you didn't hire a person. They typically give you plenty of warning before they take your money. So I would imagine this process is the same, given that it's so many kids, depending on the service.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. I'd like to move forward, close out a public comment on the agenda item, move over to resolutions. Trustee Belinda Gomes, can you pass on the faculties and programs, please?
Sure. I so move FP 91 through FP 97.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
I just wanted on FP 93, just say thank you for them. Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes, and a big thank you to FP 93 for their donation. Thank you so much.
Motion passed.
I'd like to move forward to trustee Cathcart.
I move BG 11.
Second.
I just have a question on that before we go. The change order to reduce the, the time period for the warranty, is there a reason we reduce the warranty period? Was it just to save the money?
Please, did we have anything on the roofing, such as, from a 30 year to a 20 year, she's asking?
No, we talked about, I think it was a money-saving cost and it was the best way to go about that, that was brought up.
Any additional comments or questions regarding BG 11? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Trustee Gomes, please move finance and insurance, please.
I so move FI 171 to FI 188.
Second.
Any questions or comments regarding FI 171 to 188? Seeing none.
If you could, if you could, I think, I believe it has to go to 186 and then I believe 187, 188 would be new business.
Sorry.
Yes, no, no, it's fine.
I so move FI 171 to 186.
I'll second again.
Thank you. Any other, any questions regarding FI 171 to 186? Seeing none. Doc, Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes, to all, but I'm an abstention at, on FI 174.
Thank you. Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes, but on all but when FI 174, I'll be an abstention.
Thank you. President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Consent agenda. I, I want to move CR 30.
Second.
Any questions or comments regarding CR 30? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Trustee Gibbons, please move personnel.
Yes, I'd like to move P 163 to P 179.
Second.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'd like to amend.
164.
P 164, just to take out the word driver and put A, so it reads plus A. But you gotta go to 170, 178, 179. Get a new business. I apologize. So I'm gonna redo P 163 to P 178.
No, still second.
Just for the record, we're admitting the words right or false guard.
Yes.
Any comments or questions regarding P 163 to 178? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'd like to move on to citizens' comments on off agenda items, please. Ms. Gribber, if you would like to proceed.
Hello, my name is Luani River and I live in 133 Hudson Avenue. And my topic here for tonight is the mask mandate. We would like to see that the mask have made optional. So far, we have about 180 districts in New Jersey that have made their masks optional. So I sent a letter to you guys and I sent it to many teachers in Richfield Park. I wanted to make sure that they also take part on the welfare of children. This is very important. So I want to read it for, just in case you haven't had a chance or you had any question, also ready for people watching in Zoom. So let me read the, the letter again about having masks optional and why this is really the way to go. I am writing to you in reference to the recent announcement from the governor's office that masks could be made optional at school. While we see many districts taking action and making masks optional, we have also observed your hesitancy, meaning the Richfield Park hesitancy, in making the right decision, meaning making my masks optional. For the CDC, there's no known study showing that masks, double mask or cloth mask helps stop the spread of COVID. And this is from the CDC website as of 9/9/2021. The fact is, the science about masks has never changed. Masks cannot stop micro-sized viruses. Dust Dafosse suggested, if you remember on TV, he suggested to wear two or three masks in order to filter out the coronavirus. You should also be enlightened to most to know that there's no even a significant evidence that masks can prevent infections in operating rooms. If you have a surgeon that is a friend or a family that has a medical doctor, you can ask them. Masks do not stop infections in operating rooms. In medicine, there's a term called theatrics of cleanliness. And this is where surgeons wear masks and gloves and do as sterile the room as possible, but they know if there's an infection, they can't stop it. While masks prevents the contact of blood and tissue, they would, they do not make a difference in preventing viral infections or wound infections. Wearing masks and many of the other COVID mitigation strategies have actually, have been a detriment to children and teens' overall mental health. Psychiatry, psychologists and hospitals have seen a great decline in the mental health of the young and I'm sure the schools have seen this too. Suicide, anxiety, panic attacks, addictions and depression. One thing that I noticed, and I wanted to mention this, what is hypochondria for those that know a little bit of psychology? Constant worrying about a disease for which you show no symptoms of. This hypochondria has started from our government level. We schools are doing this to our children, constant testing, asking, all this worrying that they have. And now, as the lady mentioned, if a student comes back after having COVID, having to wearing a mask, he's gonna feel like an untouchable. The hypochondria, we're giving our children hypochondria and mental illness. No wonder they are what they are today. So there's something to, you know, think about. All of this is great, but if our kids have mental or psychiatric symptoms or diseases, we're giving it to them. This is not going anywhere. It is even more damaging to special needs students who have suffered the most during COVID regulations as per the who, the use of masks for children of any age with developmental disorders, disabilities or other specific health conditions should not be mandatory and be assessed on a case-by-case basis by the child's parent, guardian, educator and/or medical provider. In any case, children with severe cognitive or respiratory impairment with difficulties tolerating a mask should not be required to wear a mask. The Richfield Park schools or any school should have never mandated masks on special needs students. Many parents in Richfield Park are asking for assurance that mask wearing will become optional. The New Jersey School Board Association states that it is the responsibility of each board of education to foster in this community of parents a sense of well-being and confidence that each child is valued and well-protected from any form of threat or danger, also to their safety and well-being. There is really no other scientific decision to make but to make masks optional for all. Lawsuits are being filed on February 11th of this year against the New York State Department of Education, the New York State Office of Children and Family Services and the New York State Health Department for enforcing mask mandates. They're presenting their case with several types of scientists arguing that the prolonged mask, mask policy has greatly harmed children academically, socially, emotionally and physically while providing no benefit to limiting transmission of COVID-19 in schools or daycares. Through our expert, we know that the states has failed to cite any evidence that establishes a causal link between masking children and reducing transmission of COVID-19 in daycares or schools and therefore such policies are arbitrary, capricious and lack of rational basis. There's plenty of medical and scientific data to prove their case. It's, it's gonna be easy to prove. Mandatory masking is against the welfare of children and teens. Some of you know me personally that although I am a resident of this town, I do not have children in the schools. Yet, as an adult, as a mom, as a chemist and as a Christian, I feel the responsibility to stand and defend those who cannot speak for themselves. All adults and parents of children in this town and all teachers and board members should feel the same. Board of Education of Richfield Park, do the, do your job, the job that you were entrusted to do, which is protect the welfare of the children. Let masks become optional. I really hope that's the case. Any, any parent that's interested in finding this letter, we posted in the Richfield Park, a little fairy, Parents for Choice or Find It For Choice. So if you need the letter, you can find it there or email me if you can find down my email. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoover. Thank you for your comments and for your letter. Thank you. Ms. Schmidt, please.
Firstment, 138 Fifth Street. I wanted to express my disappointment with the letter that we received regarding masks becoming optional on March 7th. This news comes as a huge relief to many parents who have spent the last year forcing cloth over their children's faces, knowing that it served them no benefit and some knowing it caused their child heightened anxiety, hindered their speech development, gave them skin rashes, nosebleeds, headaches, you name it. That letter expressed not one ounce of joy for the day to finally come where those parents can breathe a huge sigh of relief. At the very least, I wish the letter struck a more positive tone for moving towards normalcy for our children. The letter also mentioned compelling arguments on both sides of the mask debate, which is all well and good, but I strongly disagree. It's known fact that cloth and surgical masks on kids in school had absolutely zero impact on reducing COVID spread and there are now plenty, plenty of studies and data collection from the last two years that confirms this. So while I will always respect others' rights to choose to stay masked, I will never not share the truth. There is no compelling case for any mask or vaccine mandate. You may disagree with me, but that's what makes choice important. The letter and past history also leaves me having less confidence than others may have that by March 7th, everything is going to transition smoothly and that masks will truly become optional for all. In June, there was no mandate. In June, our kids were still masked even during summer school. Masked outside, masked on buses. And we were told at that time, it's because there was no vaccine. And then we saw how well that turned out. But I was also told it was because we need our funding. So parents need to remember the real reasons kids remain masked and that it had little to do with a mandate. We are now awaiting guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health and you can bet that those guidelines are going to see to it that our children continue to suffer. Whether masked or not, those guidelines are going to seek to coerce parents into vaccinating their child, subject more children to regular testing and put those masks right back on the minute someone in their class gets COVID. Or what I find most concerning, implement rules that segregate children. So I hope as a board, you have already considered what you will do when the guidelines are no better than the mandate was. And I certainly hope and pray I'm completely wrong about all of this. Little Fairy polled its middle schoolers to see how they feel about unmasking and sitting near unmasked individuals. While I'm all for polling, I find it a bit concerning to poll students to gauge their thoughts on being around other unmasked students. Maybe I should look at it differently, but it seems to suggest there would be a reason to fear unmasked students. If it is just to gauge how students feel, I wonder what the solution will be for dealing with that fear of the unmasked that some may have. I hope everyone understands that our kids have been virtually unmasked this entire time because the science and data was always the same. Cloth and surgical masks have never been proven to prevent the spread of a virus, especially sitting in a classroom with the same people, breathing the same air for hours at a time. So are we just going to keep living a lie and worse, make children believe that the unmasked students sitting next to them is a threat to their health? How about we tell them the truth? I mean, I'm sure a lot of them watch the Super Bowl and they can see that things don't add up. Now, what happens if a teacher says they aren't comfortable teaching unmasked kids? Are we going to start separating the masked from the unmasked? I sincerely hope not and I hope that we start telling the truth to our children. They should never be forced to wear masks in school ever again as they are medical devices and should require informed parental consent. If a parent wants their child to wear one, that is their right, which should be fully respected. I just want children to be safe, comfortable and happy. I don't want any child to be afraid, depressed or terrified of any illness. That's why we owe them the truth. Every day, the truth becomes more evident for them to see when grown adults can eat, socialize, gather and live freely while children as young as two cannot do the same. And it has been this way for months. They see that we have failed them. I am not singling out our district when I say this and I understand not everyone sees and hears what I hear, but I can tell you that horrible abuse has taken place throughout this state. Children were being rewarded with breathing breaks in a breathing chair. Children were being rewarded with breathing breaks in a breathing chair. An autistic child was eating and swallowing her cloth mask while the teacher doesn't report it because she wants that child to keep their mask on. Children with mask exemptions were being isolated, not allowed to participate in group activities and not even allowed to sit with their peers at lunch when everybody's unmasked. A teacher in Ridgewood taped a mask to a child's face. The mandate emboldened far too many adults to behave like lunatics, and I make this point because we are all part of the problem if we ignore what has occurred. And worse, if we allow it to ever occur again. We should all be on the same side and respect each other's choice, but politicians love to divide us. So please don't buy blindly follow guidelines this time around, especially those that are divisive. If we can have a Super Bowl and celebrate and the celebrities and the rich can cram into a stadium. We can keep our kids safe while giving them back their freedom and do away with all this guidance. I'm fully supportive of taking smart, highly effective measures to keep students and staff safe. I still don't understand why our schools and other districts didn't immediately use the COVID funds for air purifiers in every classroom. Good ideas don't require mandates for compliance. If we can all agree on one thing, I'm sure it's that we're all tired of this. I hope that on March seventh, we can take a huge step towards normalcy and it's the beginning of the end. I look forward to seeing more smiling faces and I'm sure the students will be thrilled to see their teachers smiling back at them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoover, for your comments. Ms. Hannah, please approach the bench.
Elena Hanna for teens St. John's Street, Little Ferry. Good evening. I wanted to thank all board members and administrators in advance. For standing on the side of our children and their freedoms. I have no doubt that as educators, parents and Americans. You will be making the right decision that will benefit our children as this is our top mission and duty. We live in the United States of America, the land of free. Unfortunately, many people take these freedoms for granted, but not us. We are the country of immigrants and many of us or our ancestors came here looking for freedom of speech. Religion and personal choice. Our entire planet got hit hard with COVID. We followed the science and abided in all the mandates that were imposed by federal and state governments. New Jersey is one of the few states that still continue having a mask mandate for children. It had a huge impact on children and unfortunately masks brought more harm than good. As World Health Organization and UNICEF pointed out in two thousand twenty article. In their advice on the use of masks for children, they said. Mask approach should be guided by health and social principles, which is do not harm. The best interest, health and well being of the child should be prioritized. Also, the guidance should not negatively impact development and learning outcomes. We should have listened and be more careful, but we did not. Extended wearing of masks for the past two years hurt our little ones the most. Speech defects, delays in social emotional development, behavioral issues, anxiety. And these are just few to mention. Unfortunately, it will take years to fix all these problems. Kindergarteners and first graders never seen what a normal education process looks like. Some were not able to learn properly their native English language. And are still struggling with basics such as speech, spelling and writing. All they see are covered faces of their teachers and classmates. And simply unable to read their emotions to understand if they are sad or happy. They cannot see teachers' lips to mimic correct pronunciation. Many have problems with skin, nosebleeds, fears and anxiety. This what we have to deal with and work on treating it. So as a law abiding citizens for the past two years. We followed the mandates imposed by our governor. Because he was, he followed the science, medical professionals, opinion and data. Finally, governor is lifting the mask mandate for schools based on the same exact science. Same exact medical professionals, opinion and same data that he got. We should not question it. We should not hesitate. We should trust it, just like we did for the past two years. The time has come to give American children and their parents a freedom of choice. Masks are not being banned and whoever feels comfortable can continue wearing them. As well as those who choose to take them off from their children should be free to do so. We live in the United States of America, the land of freedom and personal choice. And again, I believe that we all can unite and take our children's side as this is our future. The future of our great and free country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hannah, for your comments. Janet, would you like to approach the bench?
Hi, General one sixty three East Grand. Okay, one thing I was, when I went on the website today to look at the agenda, I saw something popped up about an extended school program. So I wanted to click on it and the link to it doesn't work. So I just wanted to bring that to you. You get like a four oh four code, something like that. Couple of days back when we had that snow day. That was the best medicine we could have given the kids in this district. I can't tell you from my, from my house, I can watch the kids on the hill. Nonstop kids having fun. And I just want to say that. It with all the problems the kids have been facing and all the stress the kids have been under. That meant more than putting him in school or on Zoom for the day. And I truly believe that and. You know, I know a lot of districts are now saying, well, we don't need snow days. You know what? Let the kids get away from the computers. Because you know when they're home, that's all that's going to happen. If they're on Zoom all day and then they're on it all night, it just, I, I thought that was the best mental health day we could have given them. Okay, traffic on the hill. I came home today at three, no, at two thirty five. To find a lineup up to my house where I couldn't use my driveway, couldn't pull in front of the house, unload my groceries. Parked on the side street, almost halfway down because we have kids parking their cars on East Grand now on, overpacked now. And had to carry my groceries all the way to the house. And when I got to my house, I stopped and I looked and the lineup was up the hill. I have now resorted to taking pictures. And luckily I decided to take a lot of deep breaths and calm down. Because Dr. Haynes, you were going to get a call and if you didn't get the call, I was calling Chief Rela. It is, something has to be looked into. And I know it's probably not very popular, but I can't imagine. How many parents are off at that hour of the day? To come down the hill to pick up. Kids that are thirteen and up because they can't walk home. I mean, or at least up to another point where a pickup is more reasonable. I, I honestly, I'm baffled. And I don't know what the answer is, but when the traffic then started to move, it comes down to the circle and you, now you have the problem of who's going down, who's coming up? You can't get an emergency vehicle down. If God forbid, something was needed down here or any other side streets. It's not happening. And nobody moves and there's really no place to move. It's not a wide enough street to, to carry what's carrying. And you can't even go down the sidewalk if you had to. There's not enough room with the trees. So that's something that I think needs to be looked into. But on a good note. The Ridgefield Park Arts Association is sponsoring again, a new village art exhibit. We did the ones for the kids and I'm happy to say that this latest one that'll be coming in in March. Is Art Teachers Past and Present. We have total of five teachers who have agreed to participate. One of which is for those of you that have been in district a lot of years might remember him, Dennis Ballars. He is participating. I was able to reach out to him and I will actually personally go down to. Jersey Shore to pick up his work for him if I have to. We also have Peggy Conversano, Jeff DeSantis, Mark Alasso and Mary Ellen Murphy. So I am really pleased that, you know, we have people that have decided they would participate. And opening of the event will be on March third. There will be a small reception like we normally do, starting at five thirty in the municipal building on the third floor. And their work will be up through June. So I just wanted to announce that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a quick comment, that hill is a famous hill for all of us that grew up here. You know, I second that, that it was great that they were out. Also, the art exhibit, I saw that, that's really exciting. And there's a really well known teacher, a lot of us have had Jeffrey Shaw. I know he had a, you know, a gallery viewing, I think at the library several, several years ago. So I hope that, you know, maybe they could pick something from.
Actually, I just saw his works. I don't remember what mall I was in.
Really, really?
Yeah, and, and his work was being displayed. It may have been Riverside Square. Yeah, and I was really pretty impressed by that. But I just think it's about time that we continue to try to showcase the good that's going on and recognize the teachers that are willing to participate.
Also, with the traffic, I think it's, you, I'm pretty sure you have to talk with the town because the town is in charge of the crossing guards. So I know a lot of times that cars can't get up the hill. So you're having traffic going down the hill.
Right.
So if you can talk to somebody to get, you know. Just traffic stopped and let ten fifteen cars go, you'll get a better move.
They did that because the last time I got stuck like this, I was stuck on T neck road and that was backing up. So what time do they get out? Because I figure.
But she's right. I've come down to pick up my grandson.
Yeah.
They're back all the way up the hill, around the circle, wind up on the other side. So when you get the flow of traffic, they're hindering each other.
Yep.
I think it's really.
Yeah, you just gotta get the traffic moving.
Urge kids to walk too.
Yeah. Yeah, it just, it gridlocks is what it does. And I didn't realize they're now getting out at forty because I'm thinking, okay, ten to three, you know, I've got fifteen minutes to get home and unload. And I'm like, oh, you gotta be kidding me. Not a gap. So.
Well, thank you, Ms. Malor, for your comments. Appreciate it. This is Gottlieb.
Hi, Leslie, um, just a couple of points regarding the masking that should be kept in mind. I'm not advocating a particular position, but just a few facts. Number one, I believe there is still a federal mandate for masking on buses, which means all the kids who are being picked up, whether from Little Ferry or whatever bus in Ridgefield Park is doing, still have to have a mask. So we have to remember that. Number two, Little Ferry and Ridgefield Park use a different health service or whatever you guys use, one thing and we use the county. So I think it would be in the best interest of the two districts who have similar guidelines because of kids mixing and things like that. And number three, we should make sure that if people are going to have no mask, keep their masks. You don't want any bullying. You don't want kids picking on kids because they're wearing a mask. We're not wearing a mask. That's really important. They have to understand that it's choice. And whatever one child is doing, it shouldn't bother the other child. And that's really important because you're going to have, if you go to mask optional. There's going to be kids who will wear masks for whatever reason. And if you, you just have to let the kids understand that they can't use it as a bullying thing. It might as well be an HIV thing. And that's really all I wanted to bring out, just a couple of important points.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Gottlieb, for your comments. Before moving to new business, I, I, again, I'd like to. Ask trustee Verselli to give us a, an update on negotiations committee and I apologize for that. I'll get my rap together next meeting, okay?
Negotiations met with the RPSA meeting went, you know, seemed to go very well. And both sides seem to take some real positive steps forward. So obviously we approached them with an author and they'll be reviewing it and getting back to us. Obviously, the, as you seen in the agenda, the RPA settled, which was good and RPEA is still. You know. We could do that. So, but like I said, it was a very good negotiations meeting on both sides. To have some real progress in a positive way, so.
Moving on to new business, unfinished business?
I don't think so. I, I want to make the comments. No, that's great. I, I want to make a comment about the off agenda item comments that were just made. I'm very aware that around America, this is a very heated topic of masking and unmasking and masks optional as it is around the state. And again, I want to say how proud I am of this community, for the people who came to the mic, who spoke their piece. It was a healthy exchange. I respect and admire your convictions and I'm thrilled that you were able to express them as the board was able to, you know, express our side. I think that's the way democracy works best, listening to each other, getting ideas, exchanging ideas in a healthy atmosphere. And I thank the public for that. And I stand guilty of I could express more joy in my communication. Okay, thank you for your comments. I am.
So moving on to new business. On trustee Gibbons, do you mind moving to new business for personnel?
Yes.
I so moved P one seventy nine as new business. Wasn't there one seventy nine as well? One seventy nine. P one seventy nine and P one eighty.
I so second it.
Any questions or comments regarding P one seventy nine to P one eighty? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving along to new business for finance, trustee Gomes, please.
I so moved FI one eighty seven and one eighty eight.
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding FI one eighty seven to one eighty eight?
I just want to make a comment about one eighty seven, just to make it clear that we're just voting to approve the person, not. That we're required to approve the amounts that are paid, that we're just voting to approve who the attorney is as opposed to any amounts that get paid there.
Any other comments or question regarding FI one eighty seven to one eighty eight? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez? Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Lastly, for new business. Lastly, for new business consented, Jenna, CR-31, I so moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding CR-31?
I have a question. Are the programs that we are, are planned to give the facilities to, all sponsored by Ridgefield Park? It's the first time I'm saying. To us is Ridgefield Park is Board of Rec. RP Aftercare is not town-sponsored, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So do we request any sort of payment for custodial services or anything?
It would be on the facilities use form.
I'm sorry?
It would be on the facilities use form of any added costs related to these programs using the facilities.
So this just grants them the ability to use it and then they need to fill out the form for the rest of the?
No, the opposite. It would be, they would fill out the form. Then we would, if the, if the program was able to use the facility, it did recommended by the board, by the superintendent. And on that form has the consent that we would be able to charge them for custodial or cleaning fees.
I'm sorry, I must be dense. So they, they filled out the form already?
Yes.
So do we know what those fees are?
That would be up to our fee.
It is up to the business administrator. I know Mr. Demakoff reviewed some of these also. Mr. Demakoff, I don't know if you want to comment on CR-31 or, or we took Harry as back in our presence to comment on that.
I can comment on it. In the past, we had some problems where organizations used our facilities and left them not how they found them. And we had to send in additional custodians to clean up what they left behind. And the form was changed. And I don't have the form here to look at, but they will be charged a fee if they do not leave the facility the way they found it. We expect and, but we don't always get someone that's responsible for a particular area, making sure that it's brought back to the way they found it. That doesn't always happen. And when it doesn't happen, we're gonna charge for an hour or whatever it takes a custodian to go in and, and clean it up. That goes beyond what his normal cleaning assignment is. If he's supposed to clean that room anyway, and it's okay, you know, it's not bad, we don't charge anybody. But if it's really a mess and they have to spend another extra hour there that they do not normally spend there, then they're gonna get charged for it. We had a problem in the past and we've had the times where an organization refused to pay it. And we had to come to some kind of a resolution with that. And we did.
Can I ask then, Ms., if we're, if we're voting to allow them to use the facility, other than if they don't leave it as they found it, they're not being charged for the use of the facility at all? So any increased costs like air conditioning or having somebody on staff there? You know, these are summertime hours.
Again, Mr. Demakoff, I think you saw these terms. We're charging, I believe we're charging for the use of facilities here, correct?
I believe we are in, I don't, I don't believe we're charging the recreation because they're in a certain category. I think that the policy has certain categories. And if you fall into a nonprofit, for example, you're not getting charged. I don't have that here to look at. And then maybe, Mrs. Loyacana, you can send a copy of the facility application to each of the board members so they can see it. And then we could further discuss it at a, at a committee meeting or at the next board meeting if you, if you'd like. And if you think that the form should be changed even more, we're certainly able to do that. I mean, they have to have insurance, all that kind of stuff is just automatic, that they have to provide certain things. And I, I think it would be best if we, as, or the board, as a board, took a look at the application and see what you think about it and also send the, the policy that governs it along with the application so you can see what the policy says and the categories that a group would, would fall into. A nonprofit is different than a profit organization.
Mr. Demakoff, I think another distinction that I remember, and I think we should look, look at these contracts. But I think another distinction that was made, I remember for the Board of Recreation was because it's an all-volunteer organization. Or I think it has maybe one employee.
Right.
Other organizations that are nonprofit and, and people derive salaries.
Right. And, and we've worked closely with the town because, you know, they share things with us and do not charge us either. So we have to be careful here too, that we recognize the fact and we're grateful to the, the community that, that helps us with the equipment that we don't have, lets us use their equipment, things like that. And we wouldn't want to stop that kind of a relationship with the town. Of course, financially, we have to take a good look at. I mean, that's a responsibility we have as a board, as, as board members and, and as a state monitor as well. But I, I think this is a situation that's gone on, so let's say for the Board of Recreation for many, many years. And if it changes, I think we, we should be careful and we should really give it a lot of thought if we, if we plan to do that.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Demakoff. We talked about it in the buildings and ground meeting. And we're using their facilities and not getting charged. I think we have to be careful what we do and charge them for.
Exactly. You know, what's expensive is cheap and what's cheap is expensive. Think about that a little bit. Because it's a very meaningful statement and I didn't recognize it when somebody said that to me. But I found out the hard way that, you know, you gotta be careful.
Well, thank you for your recommendation, Mr. Demakoff. I think in our next committee meeting for policy, we'll take, we'll take a deep dive at that and look at the policy and the form.
I, I think what you need, Mr. President, is to have the Phillies and Grounds look at the application and bring it back to the board with the input of Mr. Demakoff.
Of course, of course. I think Mr. Demakoff's recommendation to send that form to everybody was good.
Oh, yeah. One other thing I would suggest that we do, that the business office contact some of the neighboring towns and see what they charge for their facilities. I think it would be important for us to take a look at, if we're charging anybody, what, what is the rate? Years ago, when I was the business administrator, I did a survey and we would adjust our fees at the end of each year for the next school year. Because things go up, you know, since things will cost more from year to year. And we took a survey and we looked at it very closely and we made adjustments because we, we don't want to be one of the cheaper ones that everybody comes running over here because they're, you know, they got a great deal where in another town they have to pay more. So we have to be careful too of, of that kind of a situation. We've got to be competitive. We have to be fair. But, you know, we, we certainly don't want to lose money on this if it's costing us a lot. But I, I didn't see that in the past, that it was something that, that was not the right thing to do. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
I saw this tonight and don't have the benefit of, you know, what our policy is for how to apply for it. Is there anything that's pressing that it needs to be acted upon tonight or can?
I, I think it's because we were voting on the summer programs using our facilities, just like their summer rec program.
I, I understand that. My question is, is there something pressing that we need? And yet, there's a summer program. Does it have to be voted on today?
Yes.
Or why?
Because children and parents need to know the scheduling opportunities. And we also have to know, the people that run these organizations have to schedule.
Hire people.
Hire people. And, you know, this is about the time last year that we did this for that reason, because it was delayed. And it did cause a lot of problems with scheduling for them.
But I think it's, I think it's, I think it's hard to vote on something not knowing. You know, you're, you're saying, okay, we're gonna let them use the facility.
We have for so many years, but rec and aftercare use the facilities for the, for helping the parents and the children in our community. I mean, that's been done.
I know, but it's cost the taxpayers money.
Well.
It's following the current policy.
I think, I think.
Yeah, we, we do follow the current policy.
I think, I think we need to separate the Board of Rec. It's really important that we separate. It's not the same thing because that's a volunteer organization.
And we both, we're approving both organizations. That's the point.
Well, we could. We could also, I mean, you could make a motion to table it till the next meeting and we can vote on it and either move on or not.
No, I believe it was recommended by the superintendent, no?
Any board member can make a motion to table any item and we can vote on it and either reject it.
Please look at the dates of the motion. If you postpone this, please look at the dates that are listed in the motion you're looking to table. If you table it, you will prevent activity.
I would like to move to amend it, that we strike A, 1A in order to understand the policy, the application process and feel comfortable with what's going forward. And.
But the form has not changed. Neither has the policy.
I guess what, what I'm saying, George, is today, when I walked into the room, I saw this piece of paper.
Well, that's called the walk-in.
And, and I do not feel that I have the information. So I, I can, I can make a motion to amend it. And if you vote it down, you vote it down.
I would second Diane's motion to amend the use of facilities to not include 1A and to just table 1A and go forward with 1B and 2A as that seems to be the most pressing matter so that we can further discuss 1A in committee as was discussed here.
Roll call? Roll call on the entire motion as it stands?
As it stands.
No, she just made a motion, George.
If there's a motion to amend, you've got to take the roll call on the amendment.
We'll take the motion.
No, she just said on the motion as it stands.
Oh. I, I, I will vote that.
So what do we vote? Motion as it stands or amend the motion?
No.
But there's, there's already, there was already a motion on the floor as it is. So, I mean, we can't do both at the same time. There's already one motion. So we have to address the first motion first, no?
If the second motion is to table it, that's the one that should be amended because if we do this.
I understand, but there's a motion on the floor before that motion that was already met, was already agreed upon, and now that's up for vote. Is that not accurate? Is that not accurate? Do we not have a motion on the floor ready for vote?
Amendment, yes. We're voting on the amendment that was proposed.
Yeah, but isn't that, isn't the amendment after the original motion that's already been agreed upon and ready for vote? I'm confused.
The second, the second one is not relevant.
Then you should have said that before the first motion was made.
The first motion is the first motion.
Before then.
I'm confused. Which one are we doing? Which is first?
The, all right, I'm reading Robert's Rules of Order and the motion to amend takes priority over the main motion. So move to vote on it. We move to amend it. We have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the movement.
Thank you. We're ready to vote, correct?
Yep.
So just I'm clear. What are we going on, amend it or?
To amend it.
To amend, to remove.
CR-31. Let's go.
Let's vote to amend then.
I did, I made a motion to amend, to remove 1A.
We, we need a second.
Now we have rules for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call on the motion to amend, CR-31. Mr. Phytros?
No.
Mr. Gibbons?
No.
Mr. Gomes?
No.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
I'm all for looking at any contract that somebody has questions about, so that's a yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
No.
Mr. Verselli?
No.
Mr. Cathcart?
No.
President Fernandez?
No.
Motion failed. Three yes. Seven no.
Do we, do we need a motion to move CR-31 as it stands?
Yes.
Yes, we need a second now.
Yes.
Second, trustee Gomes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
No.
Dr. Martinez?
No.
Mrs. Orth?
No.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed. Seven to 10.
Three.
Seven to three.
Seven to three.
Sorry, seven to three.
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Nancy, thank you again for your service here.